Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the May tenth, two thousand twenty-two Travel Council Advisory Board meeting to order. First off, there's been conference of interest, speakers. Okay. Citizens to be heard. And then also presentations next. Introvert. Well, yeah, Kate. Want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I can do that. Or do we want to do intro? Well, yeah.
We need to watch.
Go around.
Yeah. My name is Kate Thomas, and I'm a public affairs specialist for the South Beach Target Group of National Parks.
And Alter, Economic Development Specialist with Grand County.
Higa Metzner, Moab, Timon Valley Film Commission. Or with.
Robert Rivera, Assistant Marketing Director for the Travel Council.
We need to stop. I see some marketing here for travel council. Sharon Kinsey, Travel Council Board Member.
Jane Dixon, Travel Council Board Member Chair.
Alex Borowski, Travel Council Board Member, owner of Stockfish United Center.
I guess Grant, Economic Development Director.
Darren McGann, Grand County Commission.
Jason Taylor, Department of Work.
Dylan Jones, City Council Liaison.
Jason Shumway, the Director of the Notchey Work Commerce and Travel Council Board Member.
I'm Chanel Maranese, and Travel Council Board Member.
Rachel Bartlett, Economic Development Administrator. And now I can.
That leaves Daniel and Zoom.
Daniel Loveridge, Travel Council Board Member.
Right. Um, great. And then next into presentation. All right, so I'm here to just give an update on time entry and how that's going at Arches so far. And didn't prepare anything too fancy. Everything's still very preliminary at this point. We don't have a lot of data, but I'll share with you what I can. And first off, the initial implementation just went exceptionally well, and it went so well, it was so smooth the first three days, that we increased our hourly allocations so that we could try to maximize visitors into the park. And something that we've noticed is that in the mornings, all of our models suggested that we would get hundreds of vehicles entering the park before six AM, but we are not seeing that right now. So that's why we kind of bumped up our morning allocations to try to balance things out a little bit. But because of that, you know, we're wondering what's going to happen over Memorial Day when things get a little bit warmer? Are we going to see more people trying to game the system coming a little bit earlier? We're not really sure, but we did bump up our morning allocations just a little bit to make up for the gap that we saw in vehicle entries on a daily basis. And then in the afternoon, we do see a surge, but it's not a really big one. It's manageable. So there are a lot of vehicles coming into the park after about four forty-five, five o'clock. And those folks, you know, we're letting them in because the time entry period is over. But again, it's really manageable. So I think it's a good problem to have. We're definitely seeing levels that are easy for us to manage. And we bumped up our afternoon numbers because we have a pretty sizable no-show rate. I don't have the exact numbers, but between four and five PM, there's quite a few no-shows. So folks that for whatever reason they canceled or they just didn't decide to come. So maybe in future years, if we did implement this as part of a planning process, we would maybe stop at four PM rather than five PM, just based on the no-shows that we're seeing so far. And that's always a good carrot to give people to. The earlier they can get in, the better. I would suggest that folks inform your businesses that tickets are not that difficult to acquire. We've actually had some openings all day long on certain days. So like on a random Tuesday afternoon, for example, you might actually have twenty or thirty tickets from two to five PM. So just let folks know if they're panicked, like, oh, I didn't get an early reservation. We do seem to have some availability in the afternoons, especially on weekdays. So just have that in your back pocket. And because we aren't seeing those high numbers before and after the reservation period, we do expect that our visitation will go down a little bit from last year. I can't tell you exactly how much that's going to be, but we were already on a downward trend. And you'll see when you look at this stat sheet that Ben put together, we flip over to the backside. For January through March of two thousand twenty-two, Arches was already down seven point seventy percent. And Cannonlands was down over ten percent from the previous year. So we were already seeing a downward trend before time entry was implemented. And when we get those April numbers, I will let all of you know, I'll share what those are. We just don't have it quite yet, but I would expect it to be down a little bit. So that, you know, if you're thinking about Arches numbers, I don't want to have any surprises or anything. It probably will be down a little bit once we get those April values. As far as visitor satisfaction goes, visitors are absolutely loving the system once they get into the park. So we have, I think, as of yesterday, over fifteen hundred reviews on recreation.gov. I'm really surprised that many people have reviewed it already. Like, people are really going to town on these reviews. We have four and a half stars out of five, and some really positive reviews I have wanted to share with you that just talks about their experience from several years ago to what it's like now. And in their review, they wrote, "We went to Arches several years ago and spent half of our time circling parking lots and trying to get through crowds on the trails to the point that we couldn't fit on one of the trails that we had planned to hike. This time, it was a completely different experience. We never had to wait for parking. The trails were busy, but not unpleasantly so, and we thoroughly enjoyed the visit. The only lines were for drinking water at Lansky Arch and the bathrooms," I like this part, "in parentheses, "which were remarkably clean." That's always good. And we are super happy with the time entry, and Arches National Park itself is, of course, breathtaking. So I thought that was really fun. I just wanted to share with you. But there's, yeah, over a thousand reviews. They're quite similar to that. So I think we're really enjoying this system once they get in. But our biggest complaint is line length. So I told you, we did bump up our allocations because we were trying to hit those target values without the early morning visitation and late afternoon visitation. We're just not getting, but that has made the line wait anywhere from twenty to thirty minutes in the morning and then forty-five minutes or so in the afternoon. So we are getting some complaints on that, but what we've been trying to tell visitors is that this is so much better than it used to be. So yes, you are waiting for forty-five minutes in line. Yes, that does feel painful, but that's better than two hours and then not getting in. So I think that even though it seems long, it's still remarkably shorter than it used to be. And we're just trying to share that with people, that yes, forty-five minutes might seem like a while, but we're getting into the park, and that's the most important thing. So I think besides that, the only other thing that we're facing is maybe some infrastructure issues. And we wish that we had a roundabout that was in front of the booths rather than after the entrance booths, because it is a little sad turning people around after they have been waiting in that line for so long. But we really had a pretty low turnaround rate. We're talking one hundred and fifty vehicles a day, which is very, very low, considering that we're looking at seventeen hundred tickets right now. So we're at about ten percent or less turnaround rate, which is really remarkable because Glacier, Rocky Mountain, they had thirty percent turnaround rates. So we're doing really, really well with that. And I think other than that, we're just going to truck along. And, you know, I think another challenge we're facing is staff morale, because it is a new system. So we're just trying to modify and adapt our operations just to keep our staff happy, them safe as well. So everybody's out there wearing high-vis vests, and we have ice water for them. We're trying to get shade structures that don't blow down. That's been hard the past couple of days. But we're doing what we can to keep our staff happy so that we can keep visitors happy. That's about it. So any questions?
I actually have a question.
Yeah.
So if people don't show up for their time slot, you don't open those up as like a here? Actually, we just have, these people didn't show up, we have fifteen tickets.
If they cancel, we do. So they have to go on to recreation.gov to cancel, though. So that, that's kind of a trick that we haven't quite figured out. How can we adapt this? Because they have to cancel for those tickets to become available.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you said you did increase the number available.
We did.
To call in that day because of the no-shows.
Yep, yeah, exactly. So we, we, it's very variable. So some, some hours, we have maybe a one percent no-show rate, and other hours, we have a fifteen percent or a twenty percent no-show rate. So it's really all across the board. So we've actually adjusted our hourly allocations in a really weird pattern to try to compensate for that.
How many tickets are available each day?
Right now, it's about seventeen hundred. We, the modeling planned for twenty-seven hundred vehicles per day, but that was factoring in the early morning arrivals and the late afternoon arrivals, and we're not seeing that. So it's strange. It's like people are wanting to follow the rules or something. And so we're not sure what's going to happen this summer. We do expect that when we start seeing temperatures in the hundreds, that people are going to come in earlier. So we haven't gone too crazy with increasing the morning allocations, just because we're not sure when that wave is finally going to hit. But we are looking at it fairly.
Have you seen a lot of uncheck in the Willow Springs area?
Not yet.
That's good.
So it is good.
Can you buy the part entry on or just the ticket to get in?
You, right now, you can just buy the National Parks Pass and the ticket to get in. The daily entrance fee, Rocky Mountain had an awful lot of problems where folks were buying multiple entrance passes, even though they only needed one. So if they were visiting the park for multiple days, they were buying two, three entrance passes and charging themselves ninety bucks, when really they only needed thirty. So we took that option out so that people didn't accidentally pay more than they should.
So it is still good for a few days then, or for a week?
It is. Yeah. So you could get, like, if you bought three separate days of time entry tickets, you only need one entrance pass, and that covers all three days.
How's it going with the sea ways, tour buses and stuff?
I think very well. It seems like they're getting in. I haven't heard any complaints. You know, we, we've had a few folks that didn't have sea ways that tried to get in without them. So we've had some issues with that, but by and large, it's been going pretty long.
But I mean, like, commercial trips as a, hey, we're a commercial trip, and then, like, you don't actually have sea way?
Yeah, there, there's been a couple of folks, yeah, that didn't get their sea way, but said, hey, I'm a commercial group. Can we get in? And it's like, oh, no. Have to fill out paperwork first.
Did we ever get the answer to that motorcycle question?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah. One, one pass per motorcycle.
Yeah. Four motorcycles in a parking spot.
So the tickets are per vehicle?
Yes. Yeah, it's not per person.
Kate, I have a question. Did anyone call me and say that, I don't know, this is a Chinese lady. So what I could, and the rest I should say that she made her reservation, and she got an email. So does she need to show that email? Because she said that in her email said that you need to go to the visitor information center to have your ticket.
Yes. So.
So if she could either print off the email or she can show it on her cell phone, as long as that QR code is visible, that's all the.
But why you say go to the visitor information center? That's what she's saying.
So I wonder if that was a, that might have been a fire furnace.
That might, yeah.
Yeah, fire furnace for maybe you have to.
Yeah.
Go to the Mick or Arches.
Okay.
Because you have to have orientation before you go in.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All right, anything else?
I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but this twenty twenty-one, so we're down seven point seventy percent for twenty twenty-two. Was it up in twenty twenty-one? Like, where are we sitting in comparison to years prior?
Yeah, in, in twenty twenty-one, I think we were up something really ridiculous, like thirteen percent or, you know, it was pretty hot. So I think that we were looking like we're getting back closer to the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen levels. Yeah. And that was in the fall time entry. And actually, we've seen that downward trend, I think, since September of twenty twenty-one. So we've been anywhere from negative three to negative seven percent. Does it work if you have a time entry like three to four, and people are lined up, so they get there like two forty, and they get to the gate a little bit earlier? Like, how?
Is there like a good? It's a secret.
Yeah. Because these people are asking. Yeah, it, it totally will be fine. We don't advertise it, but the, those tickets work for several minutes before the hourly period and then a little bit after as well. So I see a lot of the lineup like right before a certain time slot. Yeah, you have the top of the hour, you see a lot of vehicles.
Do you have a time, set time you're supposed to stay in the park or leave? Or once you're in, you're in?
Once you're in, you're in. As long as you want, and you can re-enter, as long as you validate it at the correct time. So as long as you, you know, if you had a ten AM ticket, as long as you showed up sometime between ten AM and eleven AM, and you went through the booth, you got validated, then you can come and go for the rest of the day. And that's part of the reason why our afternoon line length is so off, because there's a lot of people going back to town and, you know, grabbing lunch, going shopping, and then coming back into the park. So that's part of our line issue.
Is there any move to go with time entry at Canadian Mints at all?
Not yet. So that would have to be its own separate naming process. So we haven't even started on that. So it's still be fifteen years out. It's, it's a consideration, but I don't, you know, I don't see it happening for a while. Do you know if this trend is kind of like statewide, or how are other national parks? We are seeing Bryce, Cackle Reeve. Zion only dropped one percent, but Bryce and Cackle Reeve were more like three, four percent. So they, they are also on a little bit of a downward trend. But Zion, yeah, is only down one percent from last year, so they're still really good.
Do you want to talk to the refacts of this?
I would.
Yeah.
I think that they have a formula. So it's through traffic.
Right. I've just never stopped.
Yeah. So I think that what they do is they have a traffic counter, and then they have an equation that approximates. It's actually.
I saw that they have like a little camera, like you were trying to people. I saw that.
Yeah. Well. Thank you. Yeah. You're awesome.
Next, Dr. DeCort. You got a lot.
Yes, true. Kate, are you going to stick around or?
Yeah, I can stick around.
Okay. Just later, there's a discussion, maybe the EMS signage. Give the allow me to share with each of the hosts. It's there. Okay, I kind of wanted to start doing a bit more of a word, a little bit more just context and bring that into the inflow. I know you landed that before. But, you know, I think the meeting before this has been mostly, here are the things we need to talk about this month. So trying to provide a little bit more insight into the operations of the office, I think that I have to account their involvement to this office, et cetera. So I'm just going to kind of come through this and the previous topic, questions as we have them. Couple of things I'm going to go over today are county commission actions in the last two meetings, all that to this body. A survey that the Utah Office of Tourism put out, asking questions statewide and local communities about how they, what they feel about tourism. A bit of an update, partly, this is requested from a handful of people, just to see where we are in our advertising spend so far this year and what, what's in the pipeline, where are we at? Another update on kind of following through with that conversation about the Cooperative Marketing Grant Program, the I-70 billboard, a little update on that, and some progress in writing on a master plan. So nothing crazy here, but at the April nineteenth meeting, the county commission approved both of the grant programs, so the Small Tourism Business Marketing Grant Program and the Economic Diversification Grant Program, as well as approved Alex's appointment to the board. So he's here legally. And then on May third last week, we had put forth a consideration of consolidating the other two boards that we work with. So that's the Economic Diversification Advisory Board and the Economic Development Advisory Board, excuse me, Advisory Council. And kind of got some feedback indicating that we wanted to make sure that we had everyone represented on that. We were able to carry forth the vision of both the diversification priorities and the statutory obligations in the World and Grant Program. So we postponed that. Hopefully, we'll get that addressed by next meeting. So this came through from the Utah Office of Tourism Partner email list, which is something that I think would be used for everybody on this board. If you're not on it already, send me a note, and I can try to get you connected to the Office of Tourism newsletter. But this is something that they've been doing for several months, I think mainly coming out of their, their five-year strategic plan, a bit called the Red Emerald Plan, within which they're really trying to engage communities when they're planning marketing for the state. And you know, how do, how do actual people who are in the communities that they're marketing feel about the marketing that they're doing? And how can they do a better job of ensuring that communities' voices are heard in those statewide conversations? Sorry, that was a previous slide. So in the statewide survey, they spoke with four hundred and six people, so these numbers have a five percent margin of error. Handful of things that I wanted to emphasize, I'll do the graphic on the right first. You can't quite read this, but they found that seventy-five percent of Uta residents feel positively about the effect of tourism on Utah's overall reputation. They felt that sixty-six percent felt positively about the effect of tourism on job opportunities. Also, that sixty-two percent of residents think that tourism has a negative effect on housing. Two that are not included in that traffic, or that in general, fifty-nine percent of Uta residents feel the positive effects outweigh the negative. And that eighty-six percent agree that the state and Office of Tourism should educate visitors on responsible visitation. So when you hear forever mighty language from the state, that's that extension from the Mighty Five program that is thinking about sustainable tourism. How can the Mighty Five be forever mighty and everything in between kind of be a part of what they're advertising and not just advertise the five national parks? But everything in between, provide a high-quality visitor experience wherever people are, and also making sure that these places are going to be around forever for all of the people that, you know, want to experience them in the future, that we're being good stewards of the land and good partners with the communities and populations that live there. And so that's obviously something that we're also working on with our responsible recreation stuff. And I'll distribute these slides. Um, they also did a community survey. So there's kind of a statewide survey and then a community level survey. So they surveyed pretty much every corner of the state with specific focus on tourism-heavy areas. I want to highlight two elements that came out of the Moab specific survey. They surveyed a hundred and eight people, so obviously a smaller sample size, higher margin of error. But even with that margin of error, these are, you know, significant findings that I thought this was the most interesting thing, was that eighty-eight percent of Moab residents felt that tourism is important to the local economy, which is the highest of any community, so in the state. And then we also have fifty-nine percent of residents felt that tourism has declined the overall quality of life, which is also highest. So the, the report kind of singles out Moab within the context of, you know, we always hear this in other places, oh, I don't want to become Moab. I'm kind of thinking around, how do we plan tourism economies going forward so that we don't get numbers like this from the state's perspective? From our perspective, I just thought this was really, I mean, confirming probably what we all kind of know at some level. But there's really good data. There's, there's verbatim responses. So every single response is in there, kind of get a, run the gamut of all the different opinions. And so anyway, I guess I brought this up because I wanted to share this information with you all. Here's links to all of the actual reports. And if there's appetite, Denise Jordan, who's the research manager for the State Office of Tourism, has expressed that she'd be more than willing to do kind of a deeper dive into this stuff and probably, and pick out what she thinks is relevant for our area and, you know, help answer these statistical questions. People are like, well, is this really, is this real? Does this really represent our area? Because they do have demographic information, and it's barely representative. But if you want to look at these, they're pretty comprehensive. The larger reports are like a hundred pages long, so there's, there's good stuff there. Any questions on that before I move on?
Do you know the places that it was distributed, or how it was?
It was distributed or was it answered, asked the questions?
No, how was, like, how was it distributed in Grand County? Was it phone calls?
Oh, how do they reach the actual survey respondents? I managed, like.
What was like the demographics of the age group?
So there's a, there is a demographic breakdown, and I just gave a cursory glance. It seems to be like relatively fairly representative, it's not like supervised one way or another. But again, that's something you could definitely speak to. We want to put, we want to, you know, if this ends up being information used to, will we anything you want to do? Something we could consider as a feature of the items. So it's pretty much every community. So in areas where there's not like a Moab, it would be like a group of counties, like central Utah. It's like, you know, Juab and. But they had like Springdale area and Moab area, Park City and Kanawha. So those are areas that are our day-to-day communities. We're heavily focused on in areas that have tourism, but it's not like the red butter. They captured their sentiments. So like northeast Utah and kind of like Winter, Daggett, and Shane, where they're trying to develop some more tourism with dinosaur land.
Yeah.
For it all. But it's not, you know, their primary industry moment. Really. Oil and kitchen. And so, you know, they had different, they had very different perspectives. So it's useful to get that compare and contrast. Quick marketing spend update. So big picture money we've already allocated is that two hundred thousand dollars to Time Entry Digital Education Program that Love Communications is running. That's basically, although the money's not necessarily out of our pockets yet, it's, it's all allocated going into the spend. The timeline for that is about, you know, focusing on this first half of the program. So come June, they'll be phasing down the intensity of that a tremendous amount. So really think of that as like, you know, the front half of the program is not going to be really running through the half of the summer and the end of the program. you know, the front half of the program is not going to be really running through the half of the summer and the end of the program. Some additional resources, we spent about $30,000 on various print and TV related materials with either time entry visit visitor education focus or responsible recreation focuses. And if people are curious about that, we can provide a breakdown later. So money that's budgeted is, as we talked about last time, that flying visitation campaign. That's $150,000 out of TRT money matched 100% by the state. I have an update on that shortly. We also have $40,000 billboard expenses budgeted that we started to spend. But that all adds up to about $422,000 allocated or planned out of $440,000 advertising budget. So that leaves us about $18,000 left that's not already allocated for something that I'd like to kind of leave for, you know, for short-term things that come up, opportunities that we feel want to take advantage of, but also open to input across the board. So we talked about this last time. I kind of wanted to zoom out of that one project that we kind of RFP together and kind of get a reminder of where we're at. So this again, this is the Utah's Tourism Cooperative Marketing Grant Program. We have two reports in progress that happened in the past that had already been completed. We need to finish those to get the rest of the money to our office. We have an RFP in progress that we talked about last time. So that's that flying visitation campaign that we decided to run forward with. So we're going to aim for either the next commission meeting next week or the following commission meeting in June 7th for approval, depending on how fast, really what other fires I end up having about that. But that's in progress. The other thing that I think is important to note is that around 2022, so that's what we applied for this summer that goes into next year's marketing plan. We apply for due June 17. So that that is something that we're going to be thinking about. And and it'll it'll come for this board in the next meeting. So again, timelines are going to start to do webinars this month. The applications are due June 17. They'll do follow-up interviews in person in July and then the awards will be announced the August. Does everybody have a good understanding of how that program works? So again, the June, the June meeting for our office. Second Tuesday?
Yeah.
14, 14. Yeah. So by the 14th, we're probably going to have a final application. So I would imagine that I would probably solicit input. The email. But you know, gonna lean on love, I think. The other thing I wanted to add here is that when we talked to love recently, they've floated the idea of kind of reopening the relationship with them from a contract by contract basis to just the agency record that they've been in the past, which I think is a good idea and will allow us to spend less time going through the procurement policy. And, you know, we can have a multi-year agreement that has an auto opt-out or opt-in at the end of the year. So we don't have to in this way. Yeah, any, any, I would imagine we'd either have a intermediate meeting before that happens to kind of discuss options and strategies or just present kind of final application on that 14. Unless anyone has any strong opinions, that's probably what I would do is do the groundwork and ask for feedback.
For Alex, it is.
Yeah. So yeah, good point. So the the basic high level of how it works is that the state has its own money that they spend on advertising the state, right? In this program, any DMO such as, you know, the Travel Council or like entities like the Shakespeare Festival can apply and say, here's what we want to do. This fits into the larger strategy for the state. But this is our kind of community angle on it. This is what I want to do. Here's our money. They'll match it. And then we spend the budget. Cool. Yeah. So anyway, I mentioned this because I want to have kind of those final reports done. The RFP probably awarded before that. Before the application goes in so that we can demonstrate that we're using this program, not just sitting on cash. Okay. So the I-70 billboard got broken. Imagine.
It looks worse than that.
That's pretty nice. So so anyway, not high winds, et cetera.
Yeah.
Yeah, blown that out. Robert has taken some, I don't know if you want to speak to this, Robert.
Well, there's two plywood panels that have blown off. Yeah, now there's four. As a result, it inflated the vinyl and basically tore it off. I think the whole left side of the vinyl is gone now, isn't it?
Because you are.
Yes. Above all, respect, protect. Yeah, and these, you know, these are all part of the set, you know, the east and westbound I-70 Moab exit ones. Have they all have the same look as those the Truda award.
They might.
Yeah, these were all approved. They're barely a year old. You know, they're actually, other than the storm that destroyed this one, they're in remarkable shape. I would hate to change one of them to something different, you know, just for consistency and marketing. You know, my suggestion would be to just repair this one. If we do want to change all the billboards in I-70, it's something we might want to consider next year.
Yeah.
I think the longer, the longer that this stays up there, the worse it's going to get. I'm worried a big part of the vinyl is going to blow out on the highway or something, you know, it could be liability.
But we've spoken with the folks that can we we have a pathway to fixing.
Yeah, whilst with two of the panels missing, it was $600 to repair it, to replace the vinyls, 1,100. And install the new one is 500 on top of that.
But we have.
Yeah, it would be a total of about 2,300. Hopefully the repair costs aren't going up.
So is this a billboard that that we own if we're not renting this space?
Correct. Yes, we pay a very small permit fee every year. So it's kind of a gem. It's something we really don't want to let go because they're very hard to get on myself.
Oh, yeah.
So it needs to be repaired fairly quickly.
And this is the westbound coming from Junction?
Correct.
So I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that in case people are bothering me and saying.
Yeah, the one you can see in the background is actually before I started here 23 years ago, we used to paint the billboard. Send the guy out there and hang in a little, you hang on ropes and literally paint the design on there. That's what's left there. It did. Maybe we should do it again.
Okay, so the master plan often discussed, often run back burner. We have a really great consultant, you know, Horn Blue. Where's the Royal Community Systems Corporation? We're originally thinking of working with them to do some entrepreneurial workshop training stuff. But turns out that they during that process got a grant that they could buy technical assistance for many things. And pivoted away from that and realized that she can help us think through like, what is really, what do we really want in a master plan? What does a master plan look like? Do we actually need a strategic plan rather than a master plan? And kind of helping up with step one, which is clarifying the scope of work before we go out and get a consultant, have them work us through a whole exercise. And and then we end up with a bunch of numbers that no one reads and it's wasted time. So what I really want to get out of this are questions like, you know, what do we really want to be when it comes to tourism? What does diversification look like? And what are the strategies that our office does, who are the partners that we're working on on these things? And RFP is simply laying out the game plan. And I want this to be a lot of engagement, stakeholder engagements. Really get to getting to a point where, you know, I feel like I have a clear mandate and point to goals and objectives and strategies when we're going to the budget session. But logistically, she's coming into town for what we've scheduled to be the first meeting of that consolidated body next Thursday. Although that doesn't quite exist yet. Let's just consider it the Economic Development Board meeting. I would say that if anybody's really interested in providing input into the RFP for a master plan, we're welcome to participate in that meeting. She's going to stay with us as staff the following day to finish drafting. Any questions there?
We can send out a note.
Do that. Yeah.
You haven't been saying because of yet as far as the plan.
We have a, so two things that exist is that under Zachariah, they put together a draft economic development plan. It's called like Horn, which is playground. So that was in 2018, I think. And that was all staff made. That was headed this other direction should be. So it wasn't like engagement or it wasn't ratified by the commission. And then Chris Wells worked together, an economic diversification action plan. So those are things that exist. That one actually got approved by the commission, but again, didn't go through like nonsense. So those exist, but they haven't, they haven't, they don't really provide the habit. We can, we can send copies if that was helpful. People are interested as well. Yeah, and that's just again, that's a week.
Next, onto the discussion action items. April 12th, the next, may I have a motion to approve the April 12 minutes?
Those April 12 minutes.
My second.
So easy.
Thank you for efficient. Right. On paper? And then next, the August one, we're talking about the event advertising grant. We touched on it months ago. I'm just kind of seeing where we're at with that. So I know that we're really behind last year. So just kind of everything coming up. So just kind of going back to that, just kind of recapping that.
Yeah, so we, I'll just go through this. And so what I wanted to go over today was an overview of the current program as it is on our website as it is live. A status report on the grants that we approved last year, where we're at, and then I think next steps for the program. So as it is currently written, the purpose of the event advertising grant is that is to provide assistance to new and existing organizations to aid in development tourism during the months of November, December, January, February. The purpose is to increase the level of tourism in Grand County and create new, emerging, existing and encouraging events that could become annual events by providing additional funds for advertising purposes. The goal is to create funding to be used as seat money to new events, to help develop annual events that bring more tourists to Grand County. Eligible events, any individual company, nonprofit work. Basically, anything that is real, whether it's first time fledgling event could include, but not limited to racist festivals, dramatic productions. A handful of important stipulations. So it's currently structured that you deploy in the August of a given year for events of the following year. The events must be longer than a day in total duration. Again, taking place in those months. They should aim to become recurring and financially sustainable with five years. So I think the instinct is that seed money becomes sustainable. We no longer fund the veteran. There's favor given to quote-unquote green practices. It requires that the recipient attends a marketing session, travel council staff. It requires a 100% match. So we give you $1,000, you have to match it $1,000 with a minimum of 50% being cash. Interesting how we came up with that same structure for our other grants. And I didn't look at this one, so on the same page. One of the more important things is as written, 100% of the grant and the match must be spent on advertising. And that 70% percent must be spent outside of grant. And then the structure is that 50% is dispersed upfront with another 50% dispersed upon completion of the final report. Again, this is everything that's already in the program. Relevant links to discuss at another time. Where we're at with the with the grants to be approved last year. So in the September meeting, we approved funds for the 2021 Folk Fest. This was out of step with like the existing program timeline because during the 2021, during August 2020, 2021 year, obviously that was in COVID times. And so they had not applied for the 2021 best of the time, seeing that sure it was actually going to happen. So then the following year came in out of kind of synchronicity with the usual timeline there. That's when they applied. And then they also applied for this year's Folk Fest. So that's kind of right on schedule in August for the following year. Approved in December's meeting. And then also the free concert series for this year was approved at the December meeting. Is well considered kind of within the timeline in August. So the total dispersed amount is $36,700. Where are we at? So that has not been dispersed. And why is that? Because as I've been kind of probing that that kind of administration's office saying it's approved. It's been pointed out that some of this doesn't fit with the program as it's written. And I think that we as a body kind of considered those things and say, well, we think this matters and we should approve this. And the main takeaway is, I think that county administration wants us to change the grant guidelines or make it allow to, we can allow these funds dispersed. So I'll talk about that as the next step. But the 2022 Folk Fest has, should have no problem. That was like on, on, on schedule, on time, fits perfectly. They're spending it as. I don't know if we're doing, you know, mandatory marketing meetings. I don't know when was the last time, pardon me, the last time that happened. So suffice to say there's some things that are made yet they in the current grant program. And then yeah, and the free concerts during the summer. With the, which does that into the calendar. But the intention is that this is something that gets back to the community that provides kind of relief, anything to the workforce during the tourism season as an element applies to something that matters. As a result of not spending, dispersing is in 2021, we have to disperse it out of the 2022 budget, which shouldn't be a problem. We allocated 55 grand for this program in the tourism promotion side of things. So that would have to be kind of advertising oriented. We also allocated 40 grand to, quote, establishing recreational and convention resources. So that could be, you know, if the free concert series is is more operational cost, for example, rather than advertising, maybe that money actually comes out of a new program that we create that's coming out of that budget line rather than. Callie, you got a question?
Yeah, that's good. Great. So is the commissioner maybe suggesting we rewrite some like someone, whatever it means, like so we can go beyond just whatever summer day we're in.
Fine.
And that we put language in there saying if it is a benefit to the community along with this, that we we need to take a look at that because the community, I mean, we do need to get back to the community too, like with the free concert series. So is that what they're kind of? So is that what they're kind of looking for us to do or?
Yeah, so. Next steps. So I think the question is, first and foremost, I think we. Approve the use of that to be funded in the way that we want it to be funded. So just, I think the first step is making that happen. So. The commission administrator's office wants us to kind of do some providing to the grant program documents. Then we'll go ahead and do that. Then getting it on the commission agenda and actually getting it approved. I think that's pretty straightforward. I think the bigger question is, what do we want this program to be going forward? At this time, if it's within the existing program structure, solicit applications, consider them in August. And then that would go into the budget request for 2023. It sounds like the couple things to think through. We're not taking any action on this today, but I kind of want to. What, what do we really want to be boosting? Do we want to be boosting visitation in those four months? Or do we want to be looking throughout the year and looking at, we've got really peak. Month weekends here and there, but maybe this is consistently always down. It's in the middle of the season. Thinking that way rather than this kind of like four month block is the only time. Should we be thinking about, you know, how far to want to push? Is there a point? As a community, I think we do feel the benefit of the opposite. So trying to figure out. How do we not antagonize or say, well, we're gonna start to vote like all the way up until Christmas or whatever. Figure out, do we want to establish like a cutoff? Or, you know, those are kinds of things. And even if this is the venue for that. But I kind of see it as one track of this is a tool that affected that increasing visitation. Want during the times that we want and then separate it and have a second program that's like.
Did the commissioner say why they?
Well, now I just read a. So I don't think it's a huge deal, but you know, I think it matters to some level for advertising. This is how the grant works and then we're giving money out a way that's not eligible with my grant and either make it really clear. When we bring this to the commission that we thought of it with X, Y, and Z reasons.
Well, that's why I was wondering, exactly, we did a pretty good job of saying, you know, reading the grant requirements and trying to fit that stuff. So I'm just wondering if it's like a matter of interpretation or if it's.
On the slide just before this, do we have?
So, so and I think that there's, there's a potential that, like, I was just kind of in the middle of a huge email thread today and I was like. I think there's a potential that we don't need to rewrite it. We can just get this approved with the fact that we said these things. Their documents, that's why we want it. It's wanting to happen. Like just rewrite it going forward.
I, I agree with rewriting. I mean, that, that is. You know, back then, we needed people coming. But our season, our shoulder seasons are good. So we can probably benefit other times.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at the Star Wars and those kinds of things. They're saying, what are these key weekends and, and weeks in them using a slipper rent strategically?
There's a whole lot of events that don't happen in the summer.
Yeah, and so thinking too, those things, I think this is, this is a policy tool to make the things we want to have happen, happen.
So I know it's not in this grant program, but what has become of the stage that we approved?
That's coming up. I asked, so I asked the city because we're planning for the Fourth of July and all they said was it hasn't been purchased.
I, I know it's happening. There, there needs to be follow-up conversations about who is maintaining it, where is it parked? How do we do it? All those things. So I haven't figured this out and that's. So it's, it's, it's actually.
But even, even when we were looking at the stage, it was a year out. Yeah, so even when we were looking at it last fall or something like that, said, oh, we should do this. It was still gonna be like 2023 before.
So it's not gonna factor into this year. Yeah, good, good reminder.
No, I agree that it probably needs to be rewritten, you know. And I, and I can see the way it was written. And the timing like the Folk Festival.
Do for next steps, do you want kind of us as staff to just simply stab at it? And come up with some proposals and bring that to a future meeting. Do you have a workshop and discuss it?
Could you email it out?
As written?
Yeah, as written, yeah. Just email it out so we can kind of go through it.
So I'm gonna send out.
Could you put it in Google Doc?
Yeah, well, so I'm gonna send out. Oh, that's a good point.
And then we can like make suggestions.
You have no idea how many Google Docs I have under my.
So I'm gonna send this presentation out and if you click on these links, it'll go to the link as written. But, but either way, I think if we were to create drafts. Like some new draft documents, we would share it in Google Doc.
I just have to get my new, you know, typewriter ready.
Okay, so that, that sounds good. Any other questions on this or, you know, something that we're gonna spend a little bit more time on?
Yes, we're sending November through February, but. They just hear year round, but when are people hanging out that are community oriented and that's in the summertime? Yes, it's very hot, but it's also the time when families are out, they're doing things, they want more community events, so. Maybe tailoring it to like, these are the times where there is no events. So the language doesn't say. It's, you know, we have tons of events in spring and the fall and, but we don't have any events in winter or the dead of the summer. So let's focus on those times when there isn't, there's outline of that's and more, bringing more community events. Marketing money to events that are gonna be more community oriented for the summertime for families.
Outside in the park.
That 70% that had to be spent outside of Grant County, is that per statute or is that just something that? But to use TRT money.
Yeah, the statute is, it's, it's more that it's this establishing and promoting. Like, I think that there's, you can even go back to a layer of like, doesn't have to be marketing money if it's coming out of that. So long as you're establishing a new event that's inducing visitation, I think that's still eligible use. So I think even that can be cracked a little bit too. I think I, I don't think I would go to statutory requirements. It's just. Cause I, the thing we're working from a venue organization is like. Just creating the event is gonna bring people here and get operational support to hire people.
It's like, well, I don't wanna spend thousands of dollars marketing out. I mean, that's not really something. But we could make it a better event.
Establishing these things. That's, that's part of the state that should establish. I will, I will, when we have a draft, I'll send it out. People can make any edits or products. But I will say that that's yet. Express the cash flow concern at some level. It's a large chunk of change for operating these community things. So I'm, I'm, I'm really being able to get these checks out as fast as possible. However, I do that and then next step we think the program design.
Next discussion, signage, which is the variable message signs, the electronic ones that are outside the highway. Time entry, just kind of update on that.
Yeah, so as you've probably seen, in north of town, right courthouse wash pull off. And kind of south into town right near. We worked collaboratively with the DOT to basically borrow their size three. To do that and get permits, get group messaging on there to get people's aware. Even if they haven't seen any of our messaging, if you're driving into town, there's no avoiding it. Sets a level of expectation there, right? However, when we did that, it was kind of a short-term solution. They also could see some benefits from traffic. It's people might be doing erratic traffic behaviors near the arches entrance. They're not aware of what's going on. They gave us two weeks and they've given us five. So. I think overstating your depth of welcome at some level there. You know, they expressed that they have to do this, but they need their size places. So we had started to explore, you know, substitute options to rent one of those things. They're really expensive and they're about a little under 20 grand to purchase. So. In terms of. The county, like our office, like single-handedly doing that, it's a significant cost. That's for one. You know, so if you do 10 weeks. Talked to the sheriff's office. They seemed, you know, similar like, maybe we can help out, but if there's an emergency, we gotta use it. So. It also had to be that maybe there's like unused to the best sign at Arches.
I haven't been able to track it down.
Right, so maybe not, but also that it's been useful. So, you know, kind of at this point where. Either deciding this is a priority. Either repurchase one or purchase something in partnership with like the sheriff's department or the city. Or somewhere. I will say when we brought up the sheriff's department, we're like, are we doing this much? I kind of wanna address that and not overstay our, you know, welcome.
So even if we had our own sign, we got to ask.
And I don't see that would be a problem. Cause we already got affirmative for the language and location, so we can use the same permit for just a different sign. So that I'm not concerned about.
I was wondering what everyone was kind of gathering from their guests, like how people are finding out. Is that sign like? Now like at your hotels.
I haven't had people really ask about the sign. It's kind of half and half. So some guests are aware of timed entry. And then other guests are not, where we have the little flyers that we hand them out. If they're not aware, we usually walk them over to our. Like front desk computers, business center computers, so they can get a pass. So we show them like, this is where to log in. Sometimes they're passed us for the same day. Otherwise tomorrow's a good option sometimes, or let's look to see what options you have. And then same with, if they're calling on the phone, we advise them of timed entry. So that they know, oh, you have to have a ticket to get into Arches if you're booking your stay a week from now or two weeks or months from now, so that they're aware of that. And, but I haven't had anyone ask, like, tell me specifically it's from the sign. Yeah.
What you, Daniel? What have you seen at Hudu?
Basically the same. The sign, I don't ever get any mention on it. I think that's, I've seen it. When I drive by, I notice it a lot and I'm. Very appreciative of, cause I do think people see it. But the guests who are coming here, they get here, if they're not aware of their. Maybe this is biased to me. I think that if they're, if they haven't figured out that there's a timed entry program, they're not gonna read the street sign either.
From the side of the highway every year, like the last four years. I, I feel like there's always gonna be a message, but whether it's a fire ban, you know, because they have, we had a fire run in the last year. So this year we have a fire ban. Are we gonna have two signs? You know, no entry and.
Two hours to get in the mode with the traffic back. That's all.
I would feel like UDOT would benefit from, there's like one on I-70, that one right when you get on the freeway right by the thing. It tells you buckle up or whatever, like you'd be willing to.
Yes, because that sign they reserve for public safety, like far done pretty much, or like super short-term. They also didn't want to put anything along. Because of safety.
A long I-70 or a long, well, maybe one.
Oh, you're saying adding an additional. You're talking about the one that's like permanent.
Exactly, but, but, but it's like dead where a point turn off. And then like another one coming the other way. It seems like you always have some. I, I don't wanna sign, but also too, those are pretty obnoxious when it's gate, you know, so. But it's already obnoxious, right?
So was it a UDOT sign that was like for the mask and the, all of that? Was that a UDOT thing?
No, so, so that was either the city, either City Public Works or. There's, there are other signs out there. But, you know, it's. We can make the out, but if it comes out from the city council or. More likely for that to happen, if that makes sense. So, cause they obviously.
So really is it, it's, is there going to be a tourist-related message that we need? Past this Arches pilot program. I don't see anything lost. Kate, do you know, your staff has, you know, it'd be a loss to you guys if we don't purchase one and keep on renting one?
I, you know, I, I kind of tend to agree that I'm not sure how many people really are looking at, looking at it and, and absorbing it. But it is useful whenever someone says, why didn't you put up a sign? And then we can say, well, you passed two.
Yeah, and I imagine that's, that's probably NPS. I think that I just really need to. Sit down with our law enforcement chief and just be like, okay, I heard there was another VMS board. Where is this thing? Cause I've been asking around and nobody seems to know where it is. But if we can find that other board, then. Yeah, we can put up the quaras splash, cause that's great spot for it. So. I don't know if we could use some of our funds. You know, we do have a timed entry pool of money, but we would have to. Submit an aid request maybe, but I don't know. We could maybe contribute to the purchase of a.
What's the timeline on an aid request?
Oh, it's usually pretty quick. So.
So why don't? Yeah, I, I will look into this a little bit more and see what additional options we might have, but I agree that we've. Taken advantage of UDOT at this point. You know, we. I, we're grateful for it, but we don't wanna, you know, prevent them from using that elsewhere.
And I guess the only other possibility, you know, it's like City Public Works possibly, like, I don't know. I assume it might not exercise. Talk to the sheriff. So like, yeah, we have signed it, but I don't know. I don't, again, I don't want to overstate it as well. But I don't think you guys could purchase. Okay. Okay. So it sounds like we'll at least maybe try those options out first or buy something. And then I do want to talk to you and say thank you so much. If, if you're fine with keeping this here, we'll let you keep it. But if you stay away, it could be elsewhere.
And if they disappear before you hear something else out, we can figure out if they're.
Thank them for the loan.
Yeah. So we'll keep working on it, but I just wanted to bring it up. It's. If we wanted to move on it, it's expensive, you know, not over here, we're just going away. But we're not quite yet.
Next update of 2020 and 2021 tier 10 tiers.
There you go. Okay. So Chris and I. Are to try to pull out of our rather okay. Software. Some numbers that line up with eligible use of TRT and TRCC in state code. So I, I looked into this a little bit. So there's a part of the TRT law. That says that county should submit a report to the state tourism tax advisor for. Office towards like the office of fiscal budget analyst or something like that. I checked and our office hasn't submitted one since the 17th. And so like has not, my understanding is that Elaine Paul has been updating his board based off of what money she's been spending before I was here, but there wasn't. There's never an annual report to my knowledge. So this is something that I had prioritized and then. So we have some draft. Reports like share. Again, I need to go back through this to find, just to make sure we haven't missed anything here, but this is fairly close to. So this is for TRT. Yeah. For TRT and TRCC. And we did 2020 and 2021 to start. So this is, I honestly, we only finished this today. So if you ask me any questions you have, then I'll try to follow up. So total transient room tax revenues 2020 amounted to a little under four and a half million dollars. And therefore the previous year was a little over half million dollars in fund balance. I'm not sure that's the state out of state spend honestly. So I may know that for now. But I mean, this basically lines up right with the state statute, just for reference. So TRT was used for establishing and promoting tourism in an amount of 1.2 million dollars. Recreation, $13,000, some production like $7,000. This was our contribution to the film mission when it was in city. Zero for conventions and zero for economic diversity activity. This actually didn't even exist in 2020. So. Everything else on here is technically out of the mitigation side of things. So is it out of? Anything I spend money on? So visitor information center except for maybe that is, that goes to the MEC, that's our contribution to the MEC, I believe. This is a contribution to the modern museum. This is money going to waste disposal for the solid waste district, special district. Contribution to search and rescue, contribution to the sheriff's office. So total, total expenditure, three and a half million. 900,000 not expended out of what was received in that year, putting fund balance at 1.7 million dollars. TRCC. So a reminder, I guess. If this is making you ask the question of really how, what is TRT and TRCC? What can we spend it on? Something I've been thinking before we do another year of budget recommendations is to have Natalie Randall and Mitya do. An education kind of session with our body to make sure that we're experts on TRT and TRCC, law and how that works. And if you're confused over it, it's unbelievably complicated and there's lots of percentages that are. So TRCC is 7% on rental cars. And OHV is fairly sure they're interchangeable and not stackable, but that question came up recently. I didn't get a final answer on that. And 1% of restaurants, but they all get spent on the same thing. So it could be spent on financing towards a promotion, which my understanding is like, if you're, if you're borrowing money to do towards a promotional stuff. Pay off the bond with this, this money. But it's been spent to support the airports, convention facilities, I believe is the Grand Center. And the old Spanish Trail Arena. So that's the majority of the expenditure that TRCC.
Is that just like maintenance of those?
It's the entire staff. Any, yeah, any maintenance.
The Grand Center's over here?
Here. Yeah. So this is, this is funded in part by, I think in entirety by TRCC and OSIS one, I think in entirety by TRCC. And that's not, anything that's not like fees or, yeah, I don't think rest of the charges and fees, but those that's.
The Grand Center does for special events too, doesn't it? Rents out from providing and all sorts of things.
I don't totally know, but. Not sure the cultural facilities is here. But again, so it's about a million in TRCC expenditures, 64 grand unspent. So that left a balance of 240,000 TRCC at the end of 2020. So carrying into 2021, there's a balance of. In fund balance, a little under $2 million in TRT reserves and a little under. About a quarter million dollars in TRCC reserves.
So with OHV as a sector, will it be? Added to that TRCC part?
That's where we go. Yeah. So, so, so my understanding is that they, they created two separate categories, a rental car, 7%. And it's where there's actually like separate laws for 3% and a 4% for the exact same as the rental cars, because they have passed different times. And then the 7%, I think is supposed to be identical, but it's for OHV rentals. Because I think to clarify any, people like, well, this is not a rental car. This is a recreation activity. They wanted to capture it in that way to save. So my understanding could be that they're not, they are interchangeable. Good. That's my understanding. Well, yeah. And then there's all the other general sales. 2020 to 2021, surprise, surprise, double. So huge change in TRT revenues. The, the number was. Yes, four, four and a half million went up to a little under $9 million. So huge increase. Again, this is revenue. So, you know, it's not necessarily tied to occupancy of any particular thing or place. Which is something I wanted to dive into. But again, so here's that number, unspent in the previous year, a little under $2 million. One interesting thing, again, how TRT works is that. The, the, you can, the, the way that you can spend it is based off of what you received in that year. So the budgeting is bizarre. You have to forecast how money, how much money you think you're going to get next year and budget based off of that forecast. And you only get dinged if the future changed and you couldn't predict it. So you have to revise your budgets if. You know, the TRT anticipated TRT revenue, which you expect. So everything that I'm planning this year. And then we don't even get, we're like, all that information's lagged. So you don't get TRT slide. Like that. So, you know, we don't even know until 2023 if we were wrong for 2022. But just, you know, keep that alive. So we're 2021 spent about a million on establishing, running tourism. Higher number for recreation, a lot of that was for the Trailmaster program. So there really wasn't money that was going towards. You know, the trails departments to more than just the base and what Tyson was doing out on the trails, paint the stuff that they can hold up like happy.
That's the, sorry, that's the recreation.
That's recreation. Yeah. And there's a couple of other things in there. The, the contribution to the Arches hotspot recreation, transportation pilot, that's where that comes out of. This again is the. Contribution to film production last year. So sending that money to the city or if he was with us, I guess he was with us. Um, this is the first year we see that economic diversification activity pop up. This is largely last year, just. Mostly like staff. And so we just had to do a formula of each of the staff people in our office, what percent of their time is spending on, kind of not for some stuff. So when I started, I was only doing networks. That's my salary. It's a percentage of Ben's salary and Rob's and Robert's salary, et cetera. So that's where that number comes from. Going forward, this is where that grant money is going to come out of. All of those other programs. So that membership and these things here. Visitor information center, MEC, contribution to the museum. Waste, search and rescue, law enforcement. See that huge increase? So, you know, again, that's kind of out of my world, but that was something that stood out to me. So total TRT expenditures, we tried to spend it, but we didn't spend it all. So spent about $7 million total as a county. A little under $2 million not expended from what was generated. So in reserves, about $4 million. So that's actually, it's a statutory limit. You can only have. 50% in your fund balance of what you got the last year. So. We have spent money, but it hurts. So something to keep in, in mind that Chris is thinking about. TRCC again. Here are the collections. You know, more restaurants, even though the restaurant taxes 1%, the current tax is 7%. The total revenue for restaurants is much higher. So you can imagine that restaurant, total activity is much higher than that selectivity. Coming in with that quarter million dollars from last year. Convention facility, again, it's Grand Center, yeah, most of. Recreation facility. So total spend out of TRCC.
I know it's city, but we often times contribute, you know, and we all.
They were going to bring us a request last year.
Anyway, total expenditure was one and a half million dollars plus behind 50 grand. So in that balance is a little.
So again, there's a pretty like significant difference in convention facilities. So if there's no like upgrade, is that like all salary increase? Do we know?
Yeah, that's true. There was.
Since we have such a large like outstanding bounce here, isn't this enough for the screen or the?
Yeah. I don't know if that got like accounted for in 2021 budget year.
Oh, it was budgeted last year for this year. It was in last year's budget for this year.
It is budgeted for this budget year.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that got extended last year. So again, yeah, go ahead.
No, on TRS, TRT. Part of that is supposed to be earmarked, what are the three of, I can't remember, 21 quarter, 1/8. Yeah. I, I imagine that's at 978 or whatever. What I'm wondering is that doesn't get spent and it gets put into the fund balance? Even in the fund balance is that amount that didn't get spent earmarked for advertising?
Right. Like if it comes back out of the reserve.
So does it still earmark that it has to be used for advertising?
I would think so, because that's, that's the law.
Yeah, I would think so too. I just.
Like what's left?
Once it goes into fund balance, is it just like?
Well, because the way, I think that it's like, it would be considered if it's coming out of reserves, it's like an input into the system. And so what we're, what the state requires us to report is based off of, and what the rules is based off of. What is, what is the revenue you generate that gets in here?
I don't know the culture. The, the, do we, don't we pay for a lot, great deal of the art, the statues and the art?
Art trails comes out of recreation.
You don't do anything with multicultural centers themselves, like.
Our, you know, the gifts that we give to nonprofits. That's not TRT and all.
But to answer your question, Jason, I don't know.
I'm surprised we spent less last year on out of state.
Well, again, I don't know with out of state and state.
When we run in so much more revenue, it seems like that number should be a lot higher than it is.
Like relative to 2020?
Yeah. Because I did 1.2 the year before and but yet we made half of what we did. So it seems like there's, we're like, we didn't use a lot of our TRT for marketing purposes.
Right.
2020?
Yes, 21.
21, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think that bears out. I mean, it was a time of.
Yeah.
Quite.
Right. That was COVID. So makes sense, but.
Can you speak to why MEC gets a third of what the museum gets?
Nope. As in, I, I don't know.
Tell me what they request.
Do you want to raise share?
As far as since I've been here. That is what. That is the amount that the traffic.
It's always been that amount.
And I mean, it went up a little bit, but that's always been what it was. And that's just what they, that's what they said. That's what we give you. We don't, we always just request at least what we got before.
Be interesting also to get like reports, like what Sharon does for the MEC, you know, like from the museum, like what they sell and things like that. So I'm just kind of a little surprised to see those numbers when she.
You use the money, then you pay back?
Yes.
Pretty, pretty much.
Yes, we have to pay, we pay at least money. We lease it and all of the insurance and all of the utilities and all of that.
And this is a contribution back. And I, and I think technically that like, that visitor information center money is, I think this might be counted slightly incorrectly. I think this actually does come from. The tourism side, it should be counted there. And that the museums comes out of a different, they come out of different pots of money. Museums is like a technically, it's not in the establishment side. I'm not saying that it should be any particular amount, but.
Was there any way that we could look into getting that? Because it's really old, but what you would give us, like get that from the museum, like.
I sent them a whole bunch of numbers from 2011 on.
The, the question there is trying to understand the value of the museum, understand the value of that.
I would be interested to see why there's a huge discrepancy from year over year for the police.
Wouldn't I agree that the police needs to get that much money?
Well, absolutely. Like they need it, but it would be interesting to see like, is it salary based or is it?
I think, I think I can see.
Or did they add on more people?
We had gone so long without having way, way understaffed.
That's good then.
And we couldn't get anybody to apply. And so they had to do a significant pay increase to get people to apply. And they're still understaffed. But they're not as staffed. We do all the training, we spend all the money on the training, and you guys are stealing.
So I'm going to look at these. If you have questions about any of this, follow up and we'll try to, I think the best way is share.
And I don't know if you know this or not, but you know, so this is every piece of TRT. It's not like, and this is all the departments that goes to, there's no, because I guess there's like a mitigation side and you know, all of that.
Funny, some of the language that gets thrown around for what represents what is subjective. So nowhere in the state code doesn't say like, this is the mitigation bucket.
Right.
It's just like, that's what we've called the like 63%. The 63% is just everything that's not established. This establishment promote is 37%. And then recreation film convention can be up to one fifth of that 37%. And this can be up to one third of that 37%. And then this could be all of the 37% if you didn't want to spend the other two. But I think just to make sure we get together things in our agenda, all of this and make sure this is sent out.
Yes.
And I'm not gonna, we're not, I'm not gonna put my full faith behind these numbers. I think it still needs to be revised. Yeah.
It also doesn't talk about the amount of money that film production actually brings in in TRT taxes, which is
huge.
Hundred thousand times more than that money that is spent on that, that just, you know.
Yeah. Yeah. So I mean, you know, what's not in here is why, what's making a better revenue?
Right.
And, and that's actually probably a transition to the next section.
And go to that next update on the hashtag.
So the, um, the last two bullets are kind of the document that we work on, they're kind of the same thing. So I'm happy to talk about occupancy data and then just talk about data, data.
I'm seeing. Now I'm seeing a note pad.
Oh, oh, I know what I did. Okay. Now August, you seen that thing?
Yep.
Okay, great. So, um, in the handout that I sent, that I handed out. We have, uh, I'm just representing. Oh my.
I want to share your window.
That's what I tried to do. All right. Done for you, Daniel. I don't know. Okay. Thank you. So, um, if we look at occupancy, these were just a little down in people. I'm not really going to try to explain why. I think that's more of a group effort. But I just wanted to put together this chart and a few other charts. So the star reports that we get, they changed the format on us a few months ago. And I think it's horrendous now. And that and requests from the community have been pushing me to just create a monthly report of all the different data sets we have. Our star report is the one that people want to read about most. So I'm probably gonna front load the reports with that. So the handout you have is a draft. And I would love feedback on how you think the format is going so far. This is not something that I put out to the community yet, but the numbers are correct. So you're welcome to share those and ask a few unheard of questions. But the, the general picture is that occupancy was down, ADR continues to rise. Now I know that ADR is kind of a, a touchy thing because there are so many things that factor into that. There are market forces, there's inflation of the dollar at any given time, not just right now. But I thought it was really important to kind of consider that, you know, if you look at 2013, the ADR for April was a hundred and eight dollars. And the average occupancy was 66%. So as you can see, you know, ADR has increased over a hundred percent in 10 year period, while occupancy is increasing by about 10 to 13 percentage points on average for April. So this data we get, we do have it broken down by month, and I'm glad to circulate those month numbers as well. And I think that this will definitely tie into that discussion about how do we create a better events grant program for the community that really targets times when folks are in town, maybe visitors are not in town and people are looking for local programming. So that's really the only update I had on occupancy specifically. Does anyone have any other questions? And if not, I can just talk about the rest of what I have.
I would just.
Yeah.
I would just add one comment. Part of the thing that's affecting ADR in April versus last year, Jeep Safari was only in half of April last year. Whereas this year we had the full two weeks and that will have a dramatic impact on ADR.
Yep, absolutely. And we definitely saw not just ADR, but occupancy rising in March, uh, year over year. So that was definitely something that we were, we were thinking about when we looked at this because both March and April looked different than last year, but for different reasons. What were you saying?
I was just saying, so we, we could get this snapshot of like an entire year. You have all of that.
Yes. So it's, it's a little tricky. So I have month averages back through January of 2013.
Okay.
I have your day to day occupancy reliably through fall of 2020. So in about September or October, I can start reporting on each day. This was the occupancy, this was the ADR, this was the revenue, um, supply and demand. But before that, we just have month averages, which are still pretty helpful. But it would be nice to get that historic data. I am not sure if it exists, to be perfectly honest, because they've really changed how they track things and it's, it's much better now, but the data outputs are a little bit uglier. So I really wanted to put this together because they will segment their data when they send it to us based on weeks. They kind of determine how those weeks look. And so you can look at a chart and get a completely different understanding, I think, than what was the actual situation. I think this is a little clearer that, you know, overall, um, people coming in April seem to come year after year, and they come around the same times in April. Because you see that those trends are consistent, but still things were just a little bit lower on the whole.
I guess one thing is we, I, we're not super into speaking of revenue back from GFT because, you know, occupancy is lower, but rates are higher. But who is getting the distributional effects of that? I think it's the bigger question. If you have less people, does that mean a lot of people in restaurants have? You know, maybe people are moving to Airbnbs rather than.
I was going to say, and it's just that how many rooms have we added?
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly. We've got in the market.
We've dispersed. A lot. I mean, and considering that we're still sitting around the 60 and 70% of how many rooms that we've added, still suggests we've grown.
And Airbnb's are not calculated towards TRT, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, cool.
But they're not reflected in this state.
Exactly. This is hotel starting.
Right. Yeah. And we, we currently don't have a reliable source for basically the same data, but for Airbnb's, but that's something we're looking at. We did have that previously with love and that's just part of contract stuff that we need to work out to get that data back. But this is kind of like the industry standard that people use all of.
I'm kind of curious, like is there data where this would kind of coincide with the general sales tax, you know, so you can see like, you know, if you can see like, oh, TRT's up, people are staying in hotels, but sales tax is down, you know, meaning people are spending room in hotel rooms, but they're not spending rooms in gift shops or restaurants or, or maybe that's a bad example, but we've seen how it tracks across the state of someone moving in town.
Sure.
Would be pretty interesting.
I, I would love to see that data as well. I, I think that's more of a question for August and Chris. I don't really. Yeah. So, so that's, I was going to get to. So when it comes to the taxes that are coming in, I know there's a, quite a bit of a delay when we get that data. And I personally don't know how it's plotted, if it's plotted by date, if it's plotted by collection period. But if I were to get that data, I'd absolutely like to integrate it. We did just get our Visa Destination Insights platform kind of restarted for us. It reports on a quarterly cadence, but we're going to move our subscription to monthly. So that means at the end of the month following, we'll be able to get data on previous month. So at the end of May, we're going to have April's data. And that's going to give us a snapshot of what they say is about 60% of the credit card market. So it can give us an idea of where people are spending. Are they spending it more on retail, restaurants, stuff like that? And that's definitely going to make its way into these reports right now. I do have that data through March. So if you've got questions about that, I'm glad to look into it, but I just didn't include it here because we just don't have April yet. That's going to be this month.
This is awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's great. So, so, um, so this is, yeah, this is just a start and I'm definitely open to feedback and what people would like to see different sort of callouts. Because I don't really see our job is trying to interpret the data as much as presented. But obviously, you know, if you've got a line chart right here, I don't want to put every plot and point on there, but I do want to say what was the high, what was the low compared to things like year over year. Some other pieces of data Sharon shared with me, make numbers. I'm really excited to have those because I think that we can start comparing Nick numbers, Archer's visitor center and Archer's total entry and try and figure out what do they say about each other? As I put down here, you know, average number on record, um, before today, I only had through 2017 with Sharon's addition. I'm going to be able to look back to 2011. But I did think it was really interesting that if you look at the change from March to April this year, in the past five years, that was the biggest jump that the mix saw from March to April. I would guess probably have things something to do with timed entry. I'm not sure, but people, more people were coming.
Our April numbers went, went up really high. I mean, we're getting a lot and a lot of it is timed entry. A lot of people are coming there. We have a park ranger there. We're seeing a lot more groups coming in. Today we had a whole school from Springs. I have a classroom, actually the 70th graders from when the Springs came in. They're going all the way down to the needles to go camping and hiking. So, you know, they came in, watched the movie and they ate their lunch out on the grass and.
Great. So they parked in the right spot?
Yeah, actually they did.
Okay.
But no, it's, we're, we're seeing a lot of, a lot of, it's busy in there almost all day long now.
Awesome. Yeah. So I'm just, I'm excited to kind of start putting apples and oranges together and see, you know, what we can deliver to the community. This right here, this data is all available through NPS websites. Actually Sharon sent this to me as well. Kate gave me some of those trends that I was talking about in the January through March that she also shared with us today. So those are great. But again, I'm going to try and package them in these reports. That way people can kind of just have one place to go.
Can I say something?
Yeah, please.
About this, um, this Archer's National Park, that's in the site that we see. The reason 2021 is still low, 2020 and 2021, the park is just outside. So the only people coming in were the people that were actually coming into the store.
So that's visitor center, not visitation.
Right.
Correct. Yeah. And that's just.
The overall visitation, would you have that down below? I think it's from the entrance station, isn't it?
You just have. Yeah, the, the ones down below, that's from the entrance station. I don't have April's numbers yet.
Right. We're all eagerly. And then, yeah, the last thing I'll do is, is just show you that, um, I'm making Robert and Melissa's life really fun, but they do all these cool things in the travel council side of things that we can turn into data. Obviously with how marketing on the travel council side of things has changed, the leads are down and it may not be a great indicator of who we can expect to see. But it's still, I think, interesting to see who wants to come here. And so I'm going to start try, trying to gather that data and compare it year over year, month to month. Where are we getting those requests from? And then something I didn't include in here that I may not include until timed entry is over is analytics from Discover Moab. We can see who's visiting what pages and how long they're spending. So I, this kind of arose from the question of was Jeep Safari slower or not? I looked at Discover Moab and the numbers for the UTP and the Jeep and the Jeep Safari pages were all down year over year big time. But I didn't want to put that in there because it could be a little misleading. We are really pushing timed entry on Discover Moab more than anything else. But following timed entry, Discover Moab is still the number one place that people go when they're planning their trip. So I think in the future, you can expect analytics on who's looking at what and when. And yeah, just, um, this is, you know, the, the numbers should be correct, but there's still more that I want to put into this before we kind of put it out there. So if you have feedback on how data can be presented well, questions that you have or that you get from your guests or from your employees, you definitely want to take that into account.
I would love to see data on international visitation as it continues to potentially come back tomorrow. It's, because that's such a huge market.
So even for our lead, uh, this year, we have a lot, a lot of Canadians, they request other.
Which would be awesome.
Travel guide. And I went to Canada last, last month. And since I went to Canada, we have a lot of nature. Canadians, even probably a day without doing five to 10 Canadians a day, apply a request for them.
And I can do the same method for countries and stuff.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let's get made available on, um, the kind of website.
That's, that's the plan is that once we make this, uh, my plan is to make this a monthly thing that will be on the county website and probably in email subscriber list. But yeah, this is totally meant to be public and be easily, easily accessible.
And then have a sign up for that monthly. Would that be through Discover Moab?
What I think we're going to do, we have a pretty good email marketing list. And so I think once this report is ready to get on a monthly cycle, we'll probably send it out through that list and just offer for people to opt out if they want, because I'm sure all of you are part of that list, um, as, as well as a ton of other employers in the community.
The only thing I would add is that we will be having, uh, moving towards hopefully, uh, one of the indicators and dashboards for this kind of stuff, um, started to, which was developed out of someone who used to work for the opportunism. We've been obviously working with loves to kind of create their own, their own platform called Amify. There's pros and cons either, but I think that this article has kind of a higher usability on our end to make some matched data and a lot of analysis and then they have come to kind of like insight people. So we can have kind of them do an analysis of the data monthly and ask more questions. They also have really good geographic data. So starting to understand not only in town with the back country based on people doing Gaia and Oxy and that kind of stuff. And where are people, where are people coming from that are going to these events? I think will really send start and kind of take these more nuanced looks and questions like what weekend specifically should we be building this stuff out of? For example, how it's been used in passes, both of them are then we're seeing huge uses at a reservoir. It would be like the global hotspot. And all of a sudden, it's super busy and they're like, Dave was counting, we were coming, coming and taking our, our spot and they, they used this GPS data showed that it's actually all county residents that are using it. And, uh, DMO used that to justify, say, hey, maintenance of this park should not come out of my marketing budget. This should actually, or this is your key money. It shouldn't come out of like general county operations for the public citizens. So anyway, that kind of like really high level analysis, I think.
All right. Thank you.
The update on the Easter Jeep Safari, can I cover that?
Yeah. So just a bit is I'm, I'm working on putting together this report just for every month. We can certainly do something in zero in on Jeep Safari, but right now everything we have available for Jeep Safari is in here. Or eagerly awaiting that visa data to kind of put together the spending habits and see, maybe that says something about what people were spending on versus staying in. Or eagerly awaiting that visa data to kind of put together the spending habits and see maybe that says something about what people were spending on versus staying in. Um, because the occupancy is low, but I think there's something missing there, uh, Visa will help with that. Um, but I'm glad to do, you know, uh, graphs if that helps or just give, you know, like raw data on the days that Jeep Safari actually were. So if you really want to zero in on that, I'm glad to send that out. Thanks.
Anything else?
Thank you.
That's a beautiful report, by the way.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you.